... County Planning Commission. A few introductory comments, and of course, as a courtesy, make sure your cellphones are turned off. Any action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the Planning Office by Monday, October 2nd at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing Tuesday, October 17th at or after 9:00 AM. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. This time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes of the August 28th meeting are included on the consent agenda. Are there any objections from the Planning Commission members on any item of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I guess I am wondering about Item 2 here.
Item 2?
Do 10,960 square feet.
Okay, so you want that moved?
I just have questions about it, so I guess I would, yeah.
Okay, item 2 will be moved to the regular agenda. Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda. If any member of the audience objects to an item, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. And also, as a reminder, please return your signs that you posted out in front of your properties for zoning notices. It's a $50 refund, correct, the green ones?
Yeah.
Yep, and the county needs those back, since we don't have a surplus of those signs, so. Okay, at this time, the consent agenda, again, the minutes are on this agenda. Item 2 has been moved to the regular agenda. Item number 3 is a conditional use permit, 1761, to transfer one building eligibility. Para Burgraph is the petitioner. It's approximately four miles west of Dell Rapids. Item number 4, conditional use permit, 1762, to allow a placement of a mobile home on a property legally described as a proposed Track III of Olson's addition. This is James and Susan Olson. It's at 484-53-261st Street. It's about two miles east of Brandon. Seeing no objections, we move on to item 5, conditional use permit, 1763, to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building, requesting 2,400. Petitioner is Troy Miller. It's at 26720 Buckeye Street, approximately a mile and a half west of Sioux Falls. Okay, item number 6. Condition use permit, 1765, to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building, requesting 1,680. This is Arlen Schmeichel. It's at 26482 Holland Avenue, approximately one and a half miles west of Sioux Falls. Seeing no objections. Item number 7, condition use permit, 1766, to transfer one billing eligibility. Petitioners Arnold Loffman and Nancy Loffman. It's approximately a quarter mile south of Sherman. Seeing no objections, we move to item number 8. Condition use permit, 1767, to allow a Class 1 major home occupation, Tractors and Diesel Repair Shop. And this is Austin Braithbart. It's at 48591-256th Street, approximately two and a half miles south of Garrettson. Okay, seeing no objections. Item number 9, condition use permit, 1769, to exceed 1,200 square feet of accessory building, requesting 2,880. This is Chris Reif. Location is 46075-259th Street, approximately two miles west of Hartford. Okay, seeing no objections, we will have item number 2 will be moved, but all other items that completes consent agenda. Motion for action on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. A motion of second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The motion carries, so if your items was, were, number 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, or 9, you are free to go. Your motion has been approved. Thank you. And now, we'll start with our regular agenda, and we'll need an approval of the regular agenda, since we are moving one item.
So moved.
Second. A motion of second to approve the regular agenda, including item number 2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
David Heinold, Planning Department, as the computer loads a second here. Conditionally, item number 2, conditional use permit, 1760, is to allow 10,960 square feet. The property is located at 25715-472nd Avenue. As you can see, is the property outlined in red. The total size of the parcel is about 33 acres, or about 34 acres. And it's located just east of I-29, Interstate 29, which is a mile and a half east of the city of Crooks. It's right along the county highway, has access there, and the driveway is right here. The property itself, in going through the site plan, there, as you can see, there are several buildings on the property, including a large barn right here, and the house itself actually sits right here, as you can see the driveway. Quickly going through that. There's the highway, county highway, access to that. And the proposed site of what the petitioner is requesting for the total size includes a 60-by-88-foot accessory building to be located in this spot where a couple of buildings have been actually removed, and skipping. That's the side of the building. Just going through some of the sizes in the area, there's several buildings that exceed the 1,200 square feet total accessory building area for these areas that are located in a subdivision of more than four lots, four platted lots. For example, the property that is just across the street, about less than a quarter mile to the east, this is the location of Strawbale Winery. It has 3,200 square feet on a roughly five-acre parcel. And then comparatively, actually to the east. Sorry, that was the property that is immediately adjacent to this property to the west. This is the property that the winery is located on. So both of those properties have comparable numbers of about 3,200 square feet of about five to six acres each. Another notable property is actually located on the other side of the interstate over here. Back in May 2016, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit to allow 10,875 square feet. And that parcel was about a three-acre parcel size, so relatively small. About the same size as these properties with 3,200 square feet. This property, the building has not been built yet, but was administratively approved, extended with a request from that owner to continue that until next year. The site itself, and skipping forward to the property, this is the location of the building. As you can see, there's some dirt in the background there, and a little pad, or concrete pad. So the building would be roughly between these two trees, and then this is where I'm standing, is the driveway, just south of the house, on the parcel. Excuse me, southwest of the building, so not immediately south of it, but just off to the kiddy corner of the house. Just some of the criteria and going through. This kind of gives a better indication of the buildings on the site. This is an aerial image, the barn, and all the buildings that are included in that total. And then, the building would be located in this area. Just some of the criteria that we go through in determining, real quick. The effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity and uses already permitted. On property values, there's other buildings that are in the area that are exceeding 1,200 square feet area, 3,000 square feet, and significantly smaller parcels than this, this site of 33 acres. So it's unlikely that the proposed building, given what's already there, would have an immediate effect on the surrounding property owners and residential acreages. The effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. The area around this building, immediately to the south, to the right of this image, is pasture land and is owned by the applicant as well, or the property owner. So two different names there on the application. So the proposed size of 10,960 square feet would be congruent with the land composition, given that it's primarily agricultural with those residential acreages along the county highway, about half a dozen. Three, that utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. Access is given off of the existing driveway, as you can see there, and so no further infrastructure need to be provided. Off-street parking and loading, this is only residential business, so no commercial activities. Our residential use of the proposed building will be allowed. No commercial business or storage would be allowed in this building at any time. So there's enough parking on the site to accommodate residential activities. Five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs, so that none of these constitute a nuisance. At any time, or no offensive nuisances that are spelled out, especially in the public nuisance ordinance, would be allowed on the property at any time. Any lighting from the building should be directed downward onto the property in order to prevent light spillage, especially given the highways in close proximity. Six, health, safety, general welfare of the public in the comprehensive plan. The proposed accessory building, given the area, should have no effect, or should have no effect on the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. The use of this building is for private storage, should create few problems to neighboring property owners. This area is located within the transition area identified in the Invision 2035 Comprehensive Plan, which the primary purpose is to maintain the rural landscape until eventual municipal annexation or, and/or develop, future development. And with that in mind, that is, the Invision 2035 Plan also sets. Eems to develop a countywide land use pattern to ensure compatibility and land use productivity with municipalities and surrounding land uses. The, this area is not inside the growth area for any municipalities, but with the availability of building eligibilities that could prop up around the area residences. So recommendation, so staff finds that the requested total accessory building size is relatively comparable to the existing accessory buildings in the surrounding area. So staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, 1760, with the following conditions. One, that the total accessory building square footage shall not exceed 10,960 square feet. Two, that the accessory building shall not exceed 35 feet in height. Three, that the building shall be an accessory use to the continued use of the property as a residential lot. Four, that only personal residential storage shall be allowed in the building at any time, and no commercial uses or storage allowed at any time. Five, that all outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and fully shielded design to prevent light spillage off-site. And six, that a building permit is required prior to construction of the accessory building. And I just took a couple of pictures of just some of the buildings in the area, just in the general outside the city of Crooks, as well as in the vicinity of the property, just to get a feel for what's out there. And I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Mr. Barth, do you have any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, with the petitioner here, would you please come forward? Just state your name and address, please.
Chris Lotus. My home address is 4304 East 37th Street, Sioux Falls.
Okay, any questions of the petitioner, or you have any questions of the commission?
I don't have any questions.
Having had an old barn like that that was difficult to do anything with, that I tore down, I understand what he's doing.
Mr. Chairman, I must say that my answer, questions are answered. I probably misread it when I first looked at it and didn't realize we were taking out a couple of other buildings there. And so I'm happy with this application the way it is.
There's that existing large barn.
Yes.
That thing's almost 5,000 square foot, I think.
Of course, it's got a hay mow, you can double that.
This is your dad, isn't it, Gene Lotus?
Correct.
Okay, okay, so it's a family thing?
Yep.
Okay, yes, I know your dad, so I just kind of wondered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to address this? Seeing none, we'll call for action.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
A motion of second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we'll go to our next regular agenda item, which I believe is number 10. Conditional use permit, 1757, to allow a contractor shop, repair and taxidermy shop, and outdoor storage. Ralph Tushen is the petitioner, and this is at I-90 and South Dakota Highway 38, approximately two miles east of Hartford. Presenting again, David, yes, David Heinold, it says.
David Heinold, Planning Department, County Planning Department. Item number 10 is a deferral from the last month's meeting, August, the August meeting, and to allow the petitioner and the surrounding property owners to discuss the item in further detail. Given that that is the case, I won't go into too many details on the particular case, but just go through the particular, where this property is located. The property is outlined in red, actually, it's the subject property. The actual location of where this is at is roughly in the middle of this property. Right along, this is a gravel road that extends east from the paved, this paved road, which connects to, or 466th Avenue, which connects to South Dakota Highway 38. And this whole area, this area is located right here. And skipping forward, this is a potential plat of the, of a mutual access road off this, off that gravel road, which extends north, and the applicant is requesting this area to house the taxidermy business, as well as the storage area. So September 12th, staff, we contacted the applicant to get an update on the conditions of what was going on between the property owner and him himself, and as mentioned, that the, he reached out to the neighboring property owner, but no comment was given. And I haven't heard anything since then. So the applicant, I believe, is here, so you can ask them that as well. Just going through to some of the, this is the site plan of the building itself. This would be the taxidermy business, as well as the accessory storage areas. This is a zoning map, which shows basically lay of the land with the subject property. This is zone light industrial. The green area is most, or this is a mining operation, and there's Skunk Creek, primarily in the flood plain there. And as well as additional area that's zone light industrial, there is a concrete precast plant located just to the west at the intersection there, and a commercial area, which has a retail tourist stop. Right along that South Dakota 38. This just gives you a view of the contour map of the drainage, and the arrows aren't showing up on there, but most of the drainage, Skunk Creek is over here, as I mentioned. A majority of the drainage from the site would flow across the property, and the road does slope down towards, towards the east, towards the creek.
Kevin, is that the same road that goes down to the gravel pit?
Yes. This is the gravel pit right here. And this is the entrance. I'll just go through some pictures of the site itself. This is looking north. Nothing to, basically, you can't really see anything there, but off to the right of that image would be where those buildings would be located. And then this is looking towards the northwest. This kind, that gives you a picture of the properties to the immediate east, as there are two residential properties located over here. Located towards that, towards that tree line. And this is looking towards the, this is the concrete precast plant in the background, this big building, looking to the west, going, sloping up the hill. This is the tree line and residence in the background. And the mining operation is located off in the distance here. This is looking southeast, towards the creek. And again, just looking, this is just going back towards the road, and we'll continue on going that way. This just shows the drainage of the site, and a sign is posted for the gravel, or the mining operation, for the trucks to go north. It's the concrete precast plant, storage area, and another sign. And looking north, the precast plant on the right. And this is South Dakota 38. Looking back east towards the commercial area to the left of the image. And so, I'll just go through, I won't go through the criteria. So staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit, 1757. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for David?
I do, just, thank you, just as a point of clarification. The nearest, the home, the nearest homes are across the highway, and then there are some to the east, correct?
Yes.
And there's, but there's another lot between this property and the homes.
Yes.
Potentially, you've got a couple of lots in there, depending on how they develop it, but there's, there is vacant, empty land between applicant's property and the neighbor's property that houses to the east.
So, yeah.
I thought that was my memory, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Depends on how they develop it in the future. Could be one lot or several lots there.
So to answer your question in more detail, there shows about 500 feet from this line to this line.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a brief question on, dealing, it's directly related to industrial park to the west, where they had all these, they have all these street headaches all the time at the Hartford exit. You know what I mean. Deal with that every once in a while. So, but since this is currently a gravel, there's no stipulations or anything that'll change, correct?
No.
Okay. But at least this is a much better drained area to start with. The Hartford, south of the Hartford exit, where they have all the drainage issues and the development park there. Okay, thank you, that's all. Anybody else? Seeing none, will the petitioner come forward? State your name and address, please.
Ralph Tushen, 45749-260.
Okay, any questions of the Planning Commission?
Well, I met with the landowner last, the gentleman that was here last time, Mr. Howard, after the meeting that night, and we discussed it, and my thoughts were, to him that night, this buffer zone they were talking about needs to be right next to his property, instead of that bare lot in between. And so the next morning, I contacted Mr. Har, and he's willing to sell him a quarter. I contacted Mr. Howard, talked to him about it, and I hadn't heard anything since. Now, Mr. Har did tell me the other day that he has contacted him, and that's the last I know. I don't see Mr. Howard here tonight, and I don't know if anybody else is here to ask questions. But I guess I'm just looking for approval, the way the, his planning and zoning stated it should be done last time, and not asking for any special exemptions or anything.
Any questions of the petitioner?
Not right now.
Unfortunately, I wasn't here last time, but you were.
Yeah, I'm full of questions. So this is related to a little bit of what you visited or asked about. So this is a private road, and I'm just thinking about, what kind of shape is this private road in now? And how much truck traffic do you anticipate?
Not as much as it's on, now, I would, wouldn't think with the amount of gravel that moves out of there, but I also know it's going to be redone, and brought up to standards there sometime in October. I can't tell you the exact date, but I do know they're doing an engineering project on it right now, and it's going to be brought up to the county standards, from my, my understanding.
Okay, thank you. That's all, thank you.
Okay, any other questions of the petitioner? Thank you, Ralph. Anyone else in the audience care to address this? Seeing none?
Mr. Chairman, last month, we had a considerable discussion of this in your absence. And I think that the neighbor clearly had their issues addressed somewhat, because they're not here. So I make a motion to approve with the conditions that David outlined.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve. Need further discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would also say that at the conclusion of that long discussion last, last month, that the, Mr. Tushen and the neighbor walked out together, and I think that looked very positive at that time.
Okay, we have a motion of second for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, now we move on to item number 11. Conditional use permit, 1764, to allow gravel mining. Merlin Roy's Paving is the petitioner. EGM Farms LLC is the owner. It's four and a half miles west of Sioux Falls.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, Planning Department. Today is the request for a conditional use permit, 1764. This is to allow gravel mining on the property described. It's approximately four and a half miles west of Sioux Falls. And once again, if you're familiar with the geological formations, this is located in that Skunk Creek basin, where we have many, many gravel pits and that mining activity. But I, I hope I didn't overwhelm you with information, but there is a lot of information in your packet that you had a chance that, to review, and the applicant provided the Planning Department with a plethora of good information, and I wanted to make sure that you got to see that as well. This is located four miles west of Sioux Falls, north of the intersection of 466th and 263rd Street. And 263rd is County Highway 140, also known in the city as Maple Street. So if you just continue going west on Maple, past Ellis, you'll come to this property eventually. Right now, it's basically pasture and crop lands in the area. The proposed extraction site is located on the west side of Skunk Creek, north of the county highway, and east of 466th. And there is approximately one residence that's located within a quarter mile, and the applicant did provide a waiver from that app, from the property owner, indicating that they would be okay with the mining activity. The applicant did not provide the Planning Department with an estimation, or an estimate, with an estimate on the duration of the mining activity. The projected, the projected lifespan of these mining operations always sort of depends on the economy and the depth to which they want to extract the minerals, and economic activity, so that you, there's a variety. But they sort of vary between 10 and 15 years. And there will be no blasting, this, all the work will be done with earth-moving equipment. And staff is recommending that all the mining activity be concluded within 15 years. And if they need, should, should there be more life expectancy of that mine, or more gravel to be extracted, the applicant can always come in and amend the conditional use permit and request an extension to that 15-year time period. The applicant is also requesting to set up and operate a temporary asphalt or concrete plant from time to time on the site, and this has been allowed in other mining, sand and gravel operations with the approval of the Planning Director. Typically, what I would do is review it and then approve, approve it or not, stating the length of time the facility would be allowed on the property and any other conditions that would be required. And these are all done typically administratively. They contact me, I give them the approval with the conditions and a specific duration of time. The applicant is not showing any internal haul roads. The applicant is not showing any internal haul roads. And it's likely that, let's see, what would I want to say here? The applicant is going to be using private haul roads and it's going to run approximately three-fourths of a mile from the extraction site, straight south to highway, County Highway one forty. And they're going to be coming out onto the county highway, which is a paved road. The applicant did meet with the county highway department and discussed the use of County Highway one forty and what would be required. And a letter from the applicant summarizing the meeting with Shannon Schultz was included for your review. The county highway department is asking that the first one hundred feet of the haul road north of the County Highway one forty be hard-surfaced and that is reflected in the conditions of, recommended conditions of approval. The zoning regulations, the zoning ordinance lists several requirements and operational criteria for evaluating these type of uses, sand and gravel uses. And I'll go over those generally quite quickly because we're pretty familiar with what occurs on sand and gravel. There is a requirement or a criteria for a buffering area. And the minimum suggested setback from the, an extraction site to a residence is one thousand feet. And there is one residence in this buffer area and as I indicated, they have supplied a waiver from that applicant, which is outlined as appropriate, the appropriate steps that are needed in the zoning ordinance. So they have met that. The zoning criteria suggests a, that mining hours of operations be limited to seven AM to six PM on weekdays and eight to noon on Sundays. The applicant has requested a little bit of varying from that, from six AM to eight PM on weekdays and six AM to noon on Saturdays. And that does not greatly exceed the criteria, so we are recommending that those hours of operation be allowed. The plant, the zoning ordinance also sort of suggests that we look at berms and if they're necessary, but given the scope of the, of the activity and the fact that there is quite a substantial topographic vary, height varying there, that berms really, don't really serve a purpose. In this case, so we're not requiring or I'm not recommending any. But that, if you so desire, you could add berms or talk to the applicant about that. The, there is criteria for noise and that's fifty-five decibels recorded over ten minutes, measured from the nearest residence. And that is a recommended condition of approval. Typically, we have dust issues. That's always a, a criticism or a concern that people have is dust. And they are going to control this by applying dust control on, along the haul road as needed. They have worked with the county and they will be paving that one hundred feet north of the county highway to prevent dust at the intersection of the haul road and the county highway. The applicant provided us with a detailed hydrological study from Leggett, Beshear and Graham, which was dated the twenty-fourth of August, two thousand seventeen. And that study provides information on the geological setting and the information is that the gravel, the gravel, sand and gravel materials found near the surface and up to a depth of thirty-five feet with some areas of sand and gravel that could run up to a depth of a hundred and sixty feet. The study indicated that no dewatering will result from the mining activities. And so the mining activity will occur both above and below the water table, but if it occurs below the water table, then a drag line would be used. The study impact indicated that there would be no impacts to surrounding shallow or deep wells. And that if, if a, should the dewatering be used, that the, the applicant would be required to get a, a dewatering permit from the South Dakota Department of Natural, Natural Resources, the Water Rights Division. And that they would conduct a review of the, of the geological hydrological information at that time. As I indicated, and I think maybe I'll show you here on the, on the computer, the haul road if we can. So, one of the, one of the concerns that we really have and one of the things that the neighbors often get very concerned about is traffic and the haul, and the haul roads. Here you can see, if I can. So, this is where the mining activity is going to occur. This is the township road four sixty-sixth. And this is the intersection of the paved county road right here, County Highway one forty. So the applicant is proposing to construct their own haul road, basically from the mining activity in this area. It'll go south, it'll turn and run west here and then it'll run and, at this point, the reason that they curved this back and it comes out here is because if, the, the topography of the area is such that this is where you have the best visibility for truck traffic entering and, and exiting the site. If they brought it down here, there's not very good site distances. So they needed to move it up here. And that was reviewed and okayed by the county highway department. The, the applicant is required to provide surety in the amount of five thousand dollars, which is a condition of approval. They have supplied a reclamation plan, which is that the topsoil and the overburden are, are saved on the site. And then once they extract the material, the sand and gravel material, that overburdened soil is replaced on the property and over the, over the land and it is reclaimed back into agricultural uses. Security, the, the, in addition to their own security, staff recommends that during, that the site be secured during non-operating hours and that's typically by way of a gate at this point, that they would gate that here to, to stop people from getting onto the property on the haul road. Other considerations, this, a lot of this property, as you probably would suspect, is within the hundred-year floodplain because it is along Skunk Creek. There are regulations that the applicant will need to follow, which are outlined in our flood regulations. That really deals with not having any equipment stay in the floodplain overnight. They're not allowed to store any kind of chemicals or gasoline within the hundred-year floodplain because you could have a flooding event during non-operating hours and, and we just don't want that material stored in the floodplain. The property is also, a portion of it is in the, the groundwater protection area. And that has also the ramifications of basically shallow aquifers and we don't keep, we don't want to have petroleum products stored in that, in that area. So, that being said, there are a number of criteria that we look at to make sure that it is compatible to the surrounding land uses and it is compatible to our comprehensive plan. And those are outlined for you in the, in the sixth general criteria. And a lot of that has already been covered. There, there is really no need for parking. They have provided, they're, they have provided a haul road, which is really the infrastructure that's needed for this type of use is primarily this haul road. And have, have they adequately addressed the potential for nuisances like odor, dust, noise and fumes? And this kind of a use, you can sort of, there always is a possibility that you can have a potential nuisance because of the, the use of, of the property. There, there is noise, there's dust, there are vibrations. But none of them typically will rise to the level of a nuisance. And what, furthermore, the hours of operation I think are very important that we follow them and that will allow the, any nearby residents to have peace and quiet in the evenings. And on Sunday, there would be no activities on Saturday afternoon. So, staff is recommending approval based on the findings that the proposed use is compatible to the surrounding land uses. I also should note that there are many other gravel pits in this Skunk Creek basin. The Reynolds and Guffsterson pit, which we just talked about at the, the previous item, is located almost directly north of this. And then further south along Skunk Creek, you have other gravel pits. The county's own gravel pit is basically right here. So we are a property owner in the area that operate a gravel pit in full disclosure. And then as you move further down Skunk Creek, there are many other gravel pits. Both Merlin Roy's, Friesen's have a pit along Skunk Creek. And then as you get further towards Ellis, there are many other sand and gravel pits. So recommending approval with twenty-one conditions. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read all them for the audience?
I think that'd be all right since we don't have these very often.
Okay. So bear with me, twenty-one conditions and I'll read through them. The recommended, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit seventeen sixty-four to allow rock, sand and gravel extraction with the following conditions. Number one, that an annual fee shall be paid to the county in accordance with section fifteen point one-four of the zoning regulations. And this is a annual fee of ten dollars per acre of unreclaimed land, which is assessed to the operator. Number two, that there shall be no fuel storage allowed in areas designated as groundwater protection area or the floodplain. Three, the hours of operations shall be from six AM to eight PM on weekdays and six AM to noon on Saturdays. Four, that only dewatering shall be used for dust control, road projects and rock washing. The applicant shall obtain any required permits from the state for the use of the water. Number five, that prior to any sand and gravel extraction, the applicant shall obtain a highway access permit from Minnehaha County Highway Department for the new approach onto County Highway one forty. Number six, that the haul road shall be hard-surfaced with a minimum of six inches of granular base course and a two-inch thickness of asphalt or a seven-inch thickness of Portland cement, concrete for a minimum of a distance of a hundred feet north of County Highway one forty. The applicant shall main the haul, maintain the haul road in a good condition during the operation of the mining and reclamation activity. Number seven, the ambient air quality standards for the total suspended particulate matter shall be one hundred and fifty micrograms per cubic meter of air as a twenty-four hour average, not to be exceeded more than once a year and sixty micrograms per cubic meter of air as an annual arithmetic mean. The standards for the PM ten, which is ten microns or less in size, shall be consistent with the regulations of the state of South Dakota. Number eight, the planning department shall direct the operator to install air quality sampling stations if the standards appear to be exceeded. Such monitoring shall be at the operator's expense. Number nine, that the noise level from onsite operations shall not exceed an average of fifty-five decibels recorded over a ten-minute period measured from the nearest residence. Number ten, that one off-street parking space or parking place for each employee and two for each customer off-street parking spaces shall be provided. Number eleven, the boundaries of the extraction site shall conform with the site plan that was submitted with this application. Number twelve, that the topsoil and overburden shall remain on the site and be used in the final reclamation. Number thirteen, only clean fill shall be allowed as backfill. Fourteen, there shall be no accumulation or storage of inoperable or discarded equipment or parts. Number fifteen, a gate shall be required at the haul road entrance of the property. Number sixteen, that all mining activities, excuse me, all mining activity is concluded by January first, two thousand thirty-two. And that reclamation shall be in accordance with the plan filed with the state and outlined in the application. And all reclamation of the site shall be completed by December thirty-first, two thousand thirty-two in accordance with all requirements outlined in Article twelve G of the Minnehaha County zoning ordinance. Number seventeen, that if one or more acres of area is disturbed, the applicant is required to obtain a general permit from the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. Number eighteen, that the applicant provides Minnehaha County auditor with a surety bond or cash in the amount of five thousand dollars. Number nineteen, that the applicant abide by all regulations outlined in the Minnehaha County Flood Management Ordinance, MC fifteen dash seventeen, when working within the one hundred-year floodplain and/or floodway. Number twenty, that the sand and gravel operation shall be secured during non-working hours by means of gates and fencing. The property shall be continuously secured until all required reclamation activities have been completed. And number twenty-one, the operator shall obtain and approve, the approval of the county planning department prior to placing an asphalt or concrete plant on the site. The approval shall state the length of time the facilities may remain on the property and any other appropriate conditions.
Thank you, Scott.
So I can go over a couple pictures with you. It's not going to show a lot because when I was out there was primarily big cornfields, but let's go over some of the pictures. This is showing the site. You can sort of see, looking sort of to the east, the, the Skunk Creek Valley there. This is looking down four sixty-sixth. And this shows you where the, basically the road would come out. And this is where there's the best site distance. And where those trees are, it sort of drops down and that's why it's not very good site distance there. This is looking again to the north where the property is. If you, this is looking off to the east and across the Skunk Creek, you can see there, the county's property where we have our own gravel pit and activities going on there. This is looking north towards Songbird Acres. This is the closest residence. This is a residence across the street on four sixty-sixth. And this is on the north side of the closest residence. And you can sort of see if you, towards, looking up towards the north. And that's it. So, it's, once again, sort of a little bit hard to picture that gigantic of an area and especially when it's all covered with crops right now. But I'll take it back to, I think the most important, probably the most helpful picture is the site plan that was provided. This one which shows the, the activity in the haul road.
Questions for Scott? Okay, will the petitioner come forward, please? Come forward, state your name and address, please.
I think they have a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
Can you put up that site plan?
That plan?
That one?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name's Wayne Gullickson. I live at eight oh eight, South Dakota, Sioux Falls. My eighty-eight-year-old mother-in-law, Doris Wallen, is one of the landowners adjacent to this proposed site. There are seven apogees on the south side of four, or two sixty-third in the intersection of four sixty-sixth. Her concerns are, first of all, the gravel pit to the east, that is not in operation.
Excuse me, excuse me, sir.
Yes.
You're not the petitioner. I asked the petitioner to come forward first, please.
Excuse me?
And then, then you'll, you'll have an opportunity to speak right after that.
Sorry, everybody?
No, no.
No, I was gonna start with that. And then how do I get from here to the? Okay, yeah, there's that video, and then?
New folder that had other things in it.
And then there should be another video, too.
And Benson Farms?
Yep, 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 both of those, thank you. Okay, there's only a couple of things here. I've got the site plan and a couple of videos to show. They're really short. My name is Patty Nor. I'm with Merlin Roy's Paving. I'm here with my sister Sue Unzleman. We are the owners of Merlin Roy's Paving. I guess I won the coin toss, so I get to talk to you. I believe the last time we were here in front of the planning commission was about ten years ago, and that's when we were going for conditional use permit for our site out at Benson Farms, which is just adjacent to Goose RV, kind of in the general area out there. We have completed mining at that site. We're now in the process of reclamation, which is why we're here today to talk about opening up a new site. First of all, I'd just like to talk about, Dan Parry with our office has been out to speak with as many neighbors as he could find out there in the neighborhood. And overall, the general concern that we've been, that's been relayed to us, is traffic along four hundred and sixty-sixth Avenue. That seems to be a big concern for the neighbors out there. I'd like to hopefully put those concerns to bed, because we really don't plan on using four hundred and sixty-sixth Avenue at all. As Scott mentioned, I'll point out here, four hundred and sixty-sixth Avenue is right here. We're gonna go through the expense of building our own road through the AGM properties, south, and exit right on to, come up right through here, and exit right on to the oil road. Hopefully, that's gonna take care of any dust, noise, traffic concerns for these homes that are located right along this four hundred and sixty-sixth street here. So, we're trying to make sure that we can avoid any, any of those concerns if possible. We know that the county prefers to have access directly on to the paved roads, so that's why we put this plan together. So, we can, since it was so close, we decided to, to make that road. We worked, just so you know a little history, there is another gravel area right here that's not owned, it's owned by a different family. And we worked with trying to exit through their property, so we tried to negotiate either buying their, some property, or buying, or leasing some property. But, we weren't able to make that deal with them, and, you know, and I respect they have their own property rights and their own reasons of why they didn't want to do that. So, that's why we decided to go with this other plan, then, of going through the property that's owned by AGM Farms, which is the landowner that we're dealing with for the property up here, too. So, that way, it's all contained in, in one, with one landowner, too. The haul road, like Scott said, it does veer to the west here a little bit, but that's just because of the line of sight. We would've come straight along this property line here. It would've been, there's just, it's right at the bottom of a hill, so it would've been very hard for our trucks to enter that road without seeing traffic coming at them. So, this is a much better line of sight for us, which is why we chose that. Just to talk about other traffic concerns, our truck traffic is gonna be of seasonal nature, with very little activities happening during the winter months. We're gonna use a dust suppressant. It's gonna utilize on our internal haul road to keep the dust down. We have already talked to the county highway planning department, and they've granted us permission to access that highway. Therefore, we just feel like by building this road within the owner's property, we'll exit directly onto a paved road. We're gonna minimize any dust or traffic concerns for all of the neighbors that live out there along four hundred and sixty-sixth Avenue. But, of course, just to relay a story of something that happened when we were out there talking to one of the neighbors, Dan was out talking to one of them, and, and he was saying, you know, we're not planning, we're not gonna use four hundred and sixty-sixth Street, you know, so we don't have to worry about that. And the neighbor, they're outside talking, and Dan's like, and the neighbor was, Dan, isn't that one of your trucks right there on four hundred and sixty-sixth Street? And he turned around, and sure enough, it was one of our trucks. And, and so, when he called the truck for him, and he was like, you know, what's going on here? Why is this truck on this route? We're not supposed to be on this route. And, and apparently, what happened is that the, the bridge at four hundred and sixty-seventh Avenue is closed right now, so that was shut down. Also, Ellis Road was closed down for the day, so this truck driver kind of had to find his own path to get where he was going. But, so sometimes, I can't say it never happens. Sometimes, we do have a few lost sheep. But, hopefully, you know, if calls come into the county, if their neighbors would just call us directly and say, hey, your truck's on the road, we will take care of it. So, we will make sure and bring those lost sheep back in. So, I can't say it never happens, 'cause obviously, sometimes, once in a while, it might, but we will definitely not make that our haul roads, and we will make sure that, and reroute them if anybody does stray from our path. Scott Anderson already reviewed all the conditions that we'd be subject to operate under, and we don't dispute any of those recommendations, and we think that they're fair and reasonable. We are prepared to operate under all of those conditions. The, the site actually already has a gravel extraction operation. It's not new there. There is a state mining permit. This little square box right here is already, has a state mining permit for gravel extraction that happened in the past. So, it's not new to this site, really. And this is where we would start mining, is this little square right in here where that site was already opened up. That's where we would put our crushers for the first few times that we would go in there to crush material. And then, we'd, so we'd start there, and then we're gonna move north from there. So, I really don't anticipate us getting into the south area for quite some time. What's also on the zoning, the zoning plan is two hundred acres, because that encompasses this whole piece of property that's whole, that's owned by AGM Farms. But, the actual mining site is actually less than sixty acres, and that's what's in this box right here. That would be the only place that we-
So, that's where the material is?
Yes, yep, yep. And this is, the little box right here is where we're gonna actually start the mining. One of the conditions also states that we may operate a portable asphalt plant or concrete plant at the site upon approval of the county planning director. This is a benefit to taxpayers, because at various times, the county or the state may bid projects that are close to this source. Construction costs are extremely lowered when the plant site is close to the job site. So, for example, when we were operating our Benson Farms pit, we did have a portable asphalt plant in there on three occasions over the last ten years, and most of those jobs usually only last between two and three weeks. So, it'd be a very short, limited timeframe that we would operate an asphalt plant, and it'd only be on a, like a job-by-job basis. And of course, that's only after we'd get approval from the planning director. So, I do have a video of the site. Now, if I can remember what I need. Oh, is it going back? This one, okay, so this is it right here. This is a drone video. This is actually looking over, this is the original gravel area right here, so where we're gonna be starting. So, we're like, sitting in the middle of the property. I guess I'll start playing. Looking over, and this is where the mining activity would start. Looking north, sorry. Yep, so this is north. And just a, just about a minute here, then it's gonna move and look to the south. This is still looking to the north. This is the residence that's very close, but the mining activity from here is actually over in this area where I'm pointing, right over in here. This actually is the original haul road to that, where that they mined the gravel out. They use this haul road, but we're gonna be coming down this side over here. Now, we're turning around and looking to the south, and this is gonna be the road that we're gonna turn right into our haul road right here, this patch along the fence. And you can see all the way down here to the trees, this is the highway there, one forty, right down there, that we'll be connecting to and exiting from. And then, this is the neighboring site over here. And then, just a second, it's gonna turn and look to the west. Okay, so this is going to the west. As you can see, it's very helpful that a car was driving near the same time that the, the drone was going by. This is four hundred and sixty-sixth Avenue right here. So, again, that's where the gravel road is. Clear over here is where our haul road is going to be, right where this little patch of grass is. And I'm just gonna go back to that. So, if regards to the location of where this gravel pit is, I just wanted to say a few things. That quality gravel is not abundant throughout Minnehaha County. You know, you can't just put a gravel pit anywhere. It has to be where there is a good, good quality gravel. The deposits only follow in this area. The banks of Skunk Creek. The area surrounding Skunk Creek is important resource for gravel in the community, and it is noted in Minnehaha County's comprehensive plan. Gravel mining is already well-established land use in this area. There's property to the north. Scott already talked about, there's a gravel pit to the north, which is right up here. There's a gravel pit to the west. There's a gravel pit to the south. And of course, Minnehaha County's gravel pit is just right here, adjacent to it also. This is a very rural area, and it is sparsely populated. And we take special consideration to our residents that live near our aggregate sites. You know, we've been in this business for fifty-five years, and we value our relationships with neighbors, and we strive to be good neighbors. We work hard to maintain good communications, and if a neighbor has issues, we work really quickly with them to resolve whatever their issues are. Merlin Roy's Paving is a family-owned business and an experienced operator. We've been a part of this community for fifty-five years, and a good reputation is very important to us, because without it, an operator may not be able to obtain future permits. And we know that if we don't follow the conditional use permit, we run the risk of having it revoked. So, we know therefore that it is in our best interest to operate responsibly. And so, if there are neighbors who are in the audience tonight, or if they would call into the planning department, I would just urge them to please call us, and please, we will work very quickly to resolve whatever their issues are. In regards to reclamation, Merlin Roy's, like I said, is an experienced operator. We have reclaimed many pits over the years. The most recent example is the Benson Farm properties, like I just stated. And if I can find that now, I wanna look at that one, too. Whoops. Yep, I, perfect, thank you. So, this is already some footage of the Benson Farms that was taken just earlier this spring. This is looking to the south. This is I two twenty-nine, right, or not two twenty-nine, I ninety. And over here is where Goose RV would be over to the side over on here. It's hard to believe it, but we took seven hundred thousand ton out of this property in the last ten years. And it's been reclaimed to farmland. And the plan is for the AGM Farms to also be reclaimed to both, either farmland or pastureland. And so, this is just looking to the north, then, on Benson Farms' property. So, just to sum up, I just wanna say that the AGM Farm property is ideally located for gravel extraction operations. It contains quality gravel. It has relatively few neighbors. It has easy access to a paved highway, and it has no impact on township roads. Its location is near other gravel sites, so that ensures competition in the market, and that results in low aggregate prices. All these factors contribute to keeping aggregate costs low, and that in turn helps to keep the cost for new homes and schools and our roads low, thereby benefiting the entire community. Merlin Roy's Paving is the right operator to be granted this conditional use permit. We have a good working relationship with the administration of the county planning department, and we have a good reputation in the community. So, therefore, we just ask that you grant this conditional use permit. If you have any questions?
How many trucks do you anticipate each day? And I realize that's somewhat hard to commit, predict, because it's so seasonal, but what might you estimate?
I, I think it'd be very similar to the truck traffic that we had at Benson Farms. And so, when I look back at that, if you think that we took out about seven hundred thousand ton out of there, if you look at our construction season is probably between, like, April and October, so that we're condensed in that timeframe. If you would average out about how many hours a day and the, and the times that, or the days that we would be permitted to use, it would be about twenty-four, twenty-five trucks a day, maybe about two trucks an hour. That would be average. Obviously, when we're, if there's a bigger job, it's gonna be a little bit more concentrated, and sometimes, there's probably not gonna be any traffic there. But, I'd think it'd be very similar to what we saw at Benson Roads, and I don't think there was too much for traffic concerns during that whole operation, so.
Patty, so, on the Benson Farms thing, did, did it play out after ten years? Is that why?
I think, you know, that, that was as far as that landowner wanted to go, too, so it's all, kinda depends.
Because you're going for fifteen years on this.
Yes, and, you know, we're going to the expense of putting in this road, so I think that'll be much more appropriate this, for this, for this-
Mr. Chairman, so, do you reclaim it as you go, so, you know?
Yes, we try to. That's where we, especially at Benson Farms, we really did that a lot. That's, once we were done with a certain area, then we started reclaiming that, because especially when we're different, dealing with a different landowner, they're concerned that they wanna get crops back in. So, you know, they wanna start getting some revenue off of that, so we work with that.
And finally, I guess, that neighboring pit to the south that the drone was showing, it looked just like an abandoned thing. Is that still operating? I mean, it looked like it was waterlogged, for one thing, which of course, they all do, but-
Right, and, and I'm, I'm, I don't know that much about it. I know when we were there, there were a couple trucks there that day, so I think they are still moving some material out of there at times.
That's all for now, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, anyone else would like to address this issue, please come forward and state your name and address. Where's my gentleman that was up here earlier? Or go ahead.
How about some questions for them before they go? Will you do that?
Well, we'll, what we'll do, we'll have you guys address it, then we'll bring them back up here and answer any questions that you have at that time. Okay, so someone, please come forward, or we'll close the floor. State your name and address, please.
My name's Todd Olson. Address is four six three three three, four hundred and sixty-sixth Avenue.
And where's your house in relation to, like, just say the driveway?
It would be, it would be south of the intersection of four hundred and sixty-sixth and two hundred and sixty-third, about a quarter mile, then on the west side of the road. I, I guess, it's been addressed, you know, a little bit here on, on the use of four hundred and sixty-sixth. That's probably one of my biggest concerns, is truck traffic. And I know, you know, with the bridge being out to the, to the east, we're having more of that temporary truck traffic. And I can, I can appreciate the temporary truck traffic. I just don't want permanent truck traffic. And it sounds like that's been addressed, but I guess I'm wondering if we can go above and beyond that and make sure that the truck traffic does not go to the south. I heard some talk about truck traffic not going to the north, but I just assume it didn't go to the south, 'cause already, it seems like we have quite a bit of traffic that comes all the way from I ninety, and for whatever reason, they shortcut down this four-mile stretch of gravel. Couple other questions that I would have for the petitioner would be, um... I guess you talked about how many truck, trucks a day. I'm probably not too thrilled about the extended hours. I'd maybe like to hear a little bit about what competitive hours are for other pits in the area. I also have rental property down the road to the east about two, two miles or so, two and a quarter. So, I guess I always get concerned about my residence, because, and even myself being on this, this road, and the rest of the neighbors around here, because, you know, that six o'clock time is, a lot of times, when families are home having dinner, and it's their downtime. And to extend that by two more hours, I don't know what that's gonna mean to, you know, the peace and quiet on the, on the roads, so. And getting back to, to the heavy traffic on four hundred and sixty-sixth, and this is maybe not directly related to this gravel pit, but I don't know if the, if this, this board can make a decision on, on maybe addressing the speed limit?
No, they can't. That would be a township issue.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I might comment that Split Rock Township has a number of speed limit items they're bringing to us tomorrow that they want to change. So, the township brings it to the county, and then we pass it, then the sheriff is supposed to watch.
Okay.
County highway, they, the county commission would address any issues on the county highway, which is one forty, but the gravel roads would go through the township.
And that in turn has to be approved, then, by the county for enforcement?
Township first, then county, and then the sheriff needs ten more guys.
Another question for the petitioner for me would be, um... I just lost my train of thought here, sorry. How many, how many trucks are gonna be company-owned, company-operated versus a private trucking firm that would maybe not follow the Merlin Roy's rules, just because they're independent haulers? that would maybe not follow the Merlin Roy's rules, just because they're independent haulers?
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Olson while he's up there? Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else care to address this issue? Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name's Charles Kane. I live at two-six-two, two-six-two-four-five-four-sixty-sixth Avenue. And I live.
Six, that's the gravel road then, okay.
Yep. And my wife homeschools and she runs a daycare, so the noise would really be a big deal for us. You know, like the even, because I don't know if they do, do you check the noise for the trucks that are running up and down your own road?
Where you're located exactly on there, Scott, give them the pointer. Right there, okay.
So, you know, that's, that's one of the main things for us, you know. That and, yeah, if, yeah, with the, you know, I don't know how you would really, because I mean, we do get a lot of trucks running down that road from other places too. You know, I'd like to, you know, yeah, you say you're going to limit to them, but when the bridge went down at Hartford, they ran up and down that road, so. You know, I don't know if you can, you know, build a berm or, because I mean, even for that noise and stuff, this is a long draw that goes all the way back up this way. Yeah, so like the.
That would be part of, Scott, that fifty-five decibels, correct?
Well, we would measure the fifty-five decibels from the residence that was over.
Oh, sir? Right there?
So like, what would you do for like, you know, if they got thirty, forty trucks a day, you know, high time or something, you know? You don't measure from there? I mean, it's just from the pit?
That's difficult because I can't address that. We'll have to ask the petitioner that question. Because this fifty-five decibel would be the only control that we would have from a noise standpoint.
Okay.
And that would be from the location of the closest residence.
And it's over a ten-minute time period. You have to, there's also, as I read that, you measured over a ten-minute, ten-minute, ten-minute time period.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anyone else care to address this issue? Please come forward, state your name.
Mike Amuniamet, we just bought a twenty-five acre parcel directly across at two-six-two-eight-one-four-sixty-sixth Avenue. From the cursor here would be our little driveways right here. So we just spent a sizable amount of money buying this land and lot with the intention to build a new home. We thought we were up to the west far enough to kind of get away from the existing pits. I'd always looked around to see landowners and AGM Farms. I didn't know how the whole gravel mining, you know, you rent the land or lease it worked. Never anticipated trucks driving that close to our property and the increased activity. It never thought gravel would be right there, access from there. I guess my thing would be, we understand the resources only in certain places and certainly not up here saying that we want to stop it. But I think to the east, you can see that there's another pit. And I think if this pit could be accessed from down the road to the east, which would be kind of down here, there's already an existing approach and driveway and road that runs through there. I know that Merls and Roy's said that they had engaged in discussions with those neighbors. And I guess I would just have a few questions, if any of those discussions could be resurrected, or if you could just get a piece of that land where you could come in here and just curve and then go up. And that also doesn't affect all the traffic in front of these other seven residences that I believe this gentleman's here to talk about. And if there's any help or anything else that could be done, we would support you to try to do that. I agree with Todd with the hours of operation. You know, I think there's a reason people did seven to six P.M., so the residents get a break essentially. If you do six A.M. to eight P.M., you don't get a break all week long. And third, twenty-five, thirty trucks, forty at times, and then the other activity. And we have five kids, a lot of them are going to be driving soon, just concerned with all that additional exposure.
Excuse me for smiling, but you're on roller coaster road with five kids, I'm sorry.
We're on the south end of it, thank God, but.
We got a daycare.
And our kids won't be allowed to go north, so. So I would say that, Dan I visited with, and Dan, I think you had said that it was maybe seven to six you guys were looking at. This is news to me about the six to eight P.M. thing, so that's a concern of mine for sure. I would ask that maybe that could be reconsidered. You know, I know that you're asking for a fifteen-year permit and you can't, you know, dictate the economy, but do you think that this would be a ten-year permit perhaps, like the one up off I-90?
Okay, we'll ask for that when it comes back up, if you can address that.
I think that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, I know we have one more presenter waiting to speak. I apologize for the confusion at the beginning.
I wonder if I could have permission to take my foot out of my mouth?
You're doing okay. It was my fault, I thought, no, you're not with Merlin, I knew it was with Merlin Roy's and I didn't realize who that was.
Excuse me, I'm new to this. Anyway, Wayne Gullickson, H zero eight Dakota Avenue, who follows my eighty-year-old mother-in-law, like I said, is adjacent landowner just on four-sixty-three, if I could just drive right in here. And there is a substantial hill that starts here. Those pictures that we're showing didn't really show very well. I've been on this location many, many times and watched the traffic. And depending on which way they're coming, especially if they're going east, they can't see, you know, below the hill and they come by fast. Going west, there's a lot of truck traffic there already. I just questioned the, I know that they had okay from the, this location. And it sounds like they can't get permission from this landowner, which this gravel pit has been basically vacated and has never been reclaimed. Which is, she's concerned about this location, the safety factor, and the impact of the valuation of the properties here. There's seven, seven homesteads, seven acreages on four-sixty-three from, or two-sixty-three this way to Skunk Creek. Anyway, her concerns are that, the location of the haul road, which she felt and I felt that were hazardous, especially coming up, going westbound on one-forty or whatever. And trucks pulling out and people not being able to see them, so that was our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gul, any questions for Mr. Gullickson? Okay, if not, anyone else care to address this issue? State your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name's Brian Oakleaf. I live on the corner of four-sixty-six and two-sixty-third. And everything that's been talked about tonight, I totally understand. And I just want to recap one of the points Todd had brought up about the Merlin Roy's has control of their own trucks. And I was wondering how much, how many outside contractors, you know, if you sell gravel to the outside folks, do you have some way of implementing a plan to keep those guys within the guidelines? Living on that corner there, it's like the intersection of mud truck and NASCAR. And just with the car and pickup traffic, they've got it beat into washboards most of the time. And if there's some way of controlling that a little bit, or it's, that's the only concern I have. When I bought, when we bought our place, we knew there was a lot of gravel going on around there anyway. It's commerce, commerce is good, so that's the only concern I have.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Anyone else in the audience care to address this? Please come forward, state your name, please, and address.
Dave Knowles for two-six-one-five-three-four-sixty-sixth Avenue. Only question I have is, we have the no-truck signs up on four-sixty-six now. Who enforces that? I mean, is that something that?
It would have to be the sheriff.
But I mean, is it a township issue or is it a?
Maybe.
County? Is there going to?
Just the traffic on the road?
We actually have.
It says no trucks, so if you have trucks on it, who's going to tell them no?
Those trucks coming out of the gravel pit way north there are supposed to go north to Highway thirty-four or whatever it is, right? I mean, thirty-eight, yeah. But there has often been talk about other trucks coming through there. And the pit up north there, you know, says they're not his. Americans go everywhere in their vehicles.
Right, right. But is there, I mean, the signs that are there now, are they, is that something that you guys are going to respect, the no trucks? I mean, is that?
We're going to go beyond that.
Go beyond that, okay. That's, that's my only concern. I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of it.
It's a wonderful road, I know. It gets abused a lot.
It is a wonderful road.
Hey, anyone else care to address this issue? Seeing none, we'll ask, Merlin Roy's, come back and we'll go through this list of questions, please. If you want to come back up, please. Start at the top here, we have questions on traffic to the south, can it be reduced? Competitive operating hours, that would be our question, I guess we've had those before. Well, let's just start with that. The road, of course, as you know, is the issue.
Yes, it is, definitely. And maybe I misspoke a little bit. I wasn't trying to imply we weren't just going to, just the north, and we were not going to use the south either. I mean, we're not going to go either way on that road. We're going to try to utilize all the paved roads as possible there. I mean, it's a lot easier wear and tear on our trucks and, you know, and so, so that's, see, I just must have been oversight.
To the planning commissions who aren't familiar, that road from that corner goes straight south to Highway seventeen, is part of the problem. And forty-two, you go down to a major state highway intersection two miles south of here. That's why they want to take the shortcut, unfortunately, that's what it is.
Usually when we have a job that we're hauling to, our truck foreman will go over designated haul roads with all of our trucks, so they know what roads they're supposed to be on. Most of the truck traffic in there is probably going to be with our trucks. However, we do sell to customers. We're going to be putting a sign up by our scale that says the trucks are not allowed to use the four-hundred-and-sixty-sixth street within our, that's going to be on our property. So as they're leaving our property, they're going to be driving by that sign. We have a right to refuse service with customers that aren't following the rules too. So if we feel that there is a problem with a customer that's continually, you know, disrespecting the use of that road out there, then we're going to have a talk with them and tell them that we have that right, so. Hours of operation, we have a number of different pits in that area. And they've all been granted permits at different times, so there's all different hours of operation. Some of our pits' conditions are daylight hours of operation are what we're restricted to. These were the same hours that we operated under at Benson Farms. And they're extended beyond what our normal work, we usually start at seven o'clock in the morning. Our trucks will be leaving our site over on East Rice Street to go out and start getting their materials. So, but we have, this extended hours is helpful if there happens to be a job in the area. Especially the state DOT is becoming much more stringent on their timeframe of trying to get jobs done. It's become much more constricted, and so having some expanded hours to be able to get some of those bigger jobs done is, is, is nice because of our short construction season, but we don't plan on operating on those hours all the time. I mean, it's just something that gives them some flexibility for those types of jobs.
Our standard practice is what Dan had told Mike, and we're normally about seven to six. But like Patty said, with DOT jobs, finish dates being scheduled earlier and earlier and earlier, it's just nice to have flexibility if we need to work later weekend.
Okay, let's see, really, just watch it in here. Okay, but how many of your, what percent of your trucks are like contractors versus your own?
I don't know for sure. It just depends on the market. I mean, a lot of times, we, most of our jobs are to ourselves, so it'll be our trucks. But sometimes we do have a contract with another contractor to sell them gravel, so it will be their trucks that are hauling out for quite some time. So I don't know how to tell for sure. It just, it just depends on how that market goes.
Any other question we had was, you know, on the Benson project, we had a ten-year deal on that one, which actually I was highly in favor of, because I was here when we approved that ten years ago. And this is fifteen. Is this actually a bigger gravel source than the other one?
Yes, yes, it is.
Because to me, that affects it as much as anything, is how big is the gravel source versus what you're doing.
It is a bigger source. And then just also think about how much in the last ten years has Hartford grown, Humboldt grown? I mean, to sustain that kind of growth, you need aggregates. You need to be, have a good source of competitive aggregates. So, I mean, you know, we need more aggregate reserves, not less, because of the growth of our community.
Well, my concern when we did that one ten years ago is gravel pits have a tendency to become perpetual gravel pits. Is why we put that ten-year limitation on at that time. Because like I say, to keep a gravel project, you just kind of want to stir around a little bit and it's still a gravel pit. Versus one that's in operation consistently.
Well, true, but if you only put a limit of ten years on it, you might be covering up good aggregates than that later on your community is going to need. And then you're going to be traveling out, you know, clear north along Skunk Creek, and you're going to be paying a lot more to be hauling that aggregate in.
Any other questions of the petitioner?
I got a question for you, Patty. And here it says to conclude by January first of two thousand and thirty-two. Okay, at what point, if you, how many years before that date would you think we want to extend this? Do you have any idea, like, how much material actually is there? So how many years beyond thirty-two you may want to mine?
It's, it's hard to know. You know, I think we would just probably have to assess where we are at about probably year thirteen and, you know, kind of look at, you know, how much do we have opened up, how much have we taken? And kind of get an idea about that point. It's, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball, I wish I'd be able to know that, but there is a lot of good quality gravel there.
And I just want to let everybody know out there, we have a farm just a quarter mile north of their rock quarry out by Rowena. And they do a fantastic job. We never hear anything from it. It's very, very rare that we actually know they're crushing rock. So you neighbors that are around the area, the winds are predominantly north and south. So if you're east, west, chances are that you hear them, it's going to be very rare, so I would not worry about that at all.
Can you talk a little bit more about the discussions with the neighbors to the east and if there's any potential or they're completely off the table?
I wouldn't, I mean, I can't speak for them, okay? All I know is we thought we were making some progress, but it turns out then they decided not to work with us, and that's their right. I mean, I don't, I don't want to speak for them, but, you know, maybe in some case, if something would open up, we'd be willing to talk again. I mean, I would want to use that site, but I think in the interim, we need to have a plan of, you know, if you're running a grant gravel mining, we need to have an access way to get that out. And so I would urge the planning directors to still use this, you know, have this access way out in the permit so that that is in there and that we all know that that's there. And if we could, you know, work out something else later on, you know, we'd be able to do that, but.
What is your goal as far as startup data of actually utilizing, if you have to build this road and everything, it's the next spring?
I think we would probably start building the road probably this fall yet, and then probably start mining next spring. But yeah, we would, we would start moving.
That would be your timetable? Okay, any other questions of the petitioner? If not, thank you.
Patty, I have one more question. So was there any look at logistics of going north a mile instead of south? Coming south, that's about three-quarters of a mile, maybe just touch more with the jogs?
You mean like going over, over to four-hundred-and-sixty-six and then going north?
Straight north through more farmland, like you're coming through to the south?
Well, we just thought with this oil road access right here, it was closer. And that is kind of part of what is in the county regulations, is they prefer that you access onto a paved road. And we saw that paved road there, so that's why we made the plans to go that way.
I guess I don't know the area very well from north to the north, but isn't it not too far? If, once you get another mile north to get to jog over to four-sixty-six to get to I-90?
It could be, I just know we did not really want to be on four-hundred-and-sixty-sixth Avenue one way or the other. So that's why we, we would still have to use four-hundred-and-sixty-sixth Avenue to go north to get onto I-90.
Okay, so. Okay, so at this time, we'll close the floor, open for discussion, action. We already closed the floor, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, you know, there are always issues like traffic and hours of operation. And I think anybody living in the rural is supposed to have the freedom to farm covenant with their deed, which might include having a, you know, corn picking machine or combine going at eleven-thirty at night might have aircraft spraying over your property, not on your property hopefully, but farm equipment trundling down your road. So there is, there is, uh, problems with economic activity that aren't always pleasant. As far as the hours of operation, I know we recently approved a, um, animal husbandry operation where I think we approved nine hundred and fifty animals, and they were not planning on having more than nine hundred, but they're afraid that if they had nine hundred and six, they'd be in violation. And so they, they went for nine fifty. So I think, you know, it's good to have a little bit of a margin for error on those things like the hours of operation. And I do believe that, uh, these are good operators and will fulfill the reclamation requirements. And I, I, I hope that it isn't, uh, too disruptive to, to the locals, but I don't believe that it will be. So I personally plan to support this.
Okay. Hey Doug, let's just keep moving right down the line here.
I'll echo what Jeff just said. You know, Merlin Roy's have been around for fifty, fifty-five years in your class operation. You know, they do things right. I have seen no, no reason to deny them this at all. Like they said, if you have concerns, go directly to them and call them, and I'm sure they will straighten it out with you. So I'm gonna support this decision.
Hey Mike, any comments?
I guess I too would support this decision to move forward with this gravel operation. Merlin Roy's is a competitor of mine, but do also know that they're an outstanding operator and do feel that they do go above and beyond to meet their, their obligation. So with that said, I guess I would support this.
Excuse me, Becky?
I would echo everyone else. This is an, we are asked to rule on appropriate land use. And extraction of gravel is a very appropriate land use for, um, for the, for the rural parts of the county. And I believe that the conditions are reasonable, and I will support, I will support this.
Okay, Bonnie?
I'm gonna support this too. I live out east of Sioux Falls, and years ago, we had some issues with Merlin Roy's when they were going to increase their operation out there. Several of the families were, uh, I guess leery of the dust, the noise, um, the operation times, and the increase of the traffic on any of the gravel roads out there or even Highway forty-two. But they were, they, all of them were very courteous to us. Um, I think they answered all of our questions. And this is an operation that is run by a family, and I think they back up what they, exactly what she said, that if you have an issue, that if you call them, they will try to, um, resolve that. So I will support the, support their conditional use as well.
Okay. Of course, one of the biggest consideration though, it is everyone's concern is traffic and trucks. And unfortunately, the enforcement of those trucks is the, it's just difficult. It just is, because, well, I got a brother's a trucker, and he's typically a bullheaded trucker. That's just the way it is. They're gonna do what they want unless someone's standing there with a patrol car telling them no. And, uh, but, but overall, like I say, I go by past experience. I don't care how long somebody has been there doing something like Merlin Roy's, but you go by their actions. And that's why I watch that Peterson Farms things rather closely. And just see, okay, so how are they gonna do this? And they did that, uh, is what, I've never seen one done that well, quite frankly. And, uh, and like I say, I, I probably won't have to vote on this, but like I say, I would certainly support this. And, uh, 'cause they do react, I know if you do have a problem, they will react to it. And we have had problems with the pit to the north of this one. And now that there's a different operator in there, a good operator, we don't hear about that one anymore either. It all depends about who's running these things is what makes the biggest difference. So, so we'll call for action.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve.
And that's with the conditions as I read?
With the conditions as stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Motion carries. And all decisions, of course, can be appealed to the county commission. Now, we're to old business first. Old business deal, I was, the last time, see, I wasn't here last time, but the time before, we had voted to not allow the housing development out by landfill. And the county commission supported us on that unanimously. And one of the questions that came up at that deal was Eric, who does a very nice job of drawing up those plans for people. You know, I forget his last name, but he does a very nice job, but he questions-
Willitsen, Eric Willitsen.
Eric Willitsen, does a very nice job. But he said, he seems, he said that we have, as a planning commission, evidently have a problem with sanitary sewer. Just, you know, with the septic tanks, because that's what we were questioning. And so I answered it this way, you know, with all the issues that Sioux Falls is having with, um, annexations, one of the reasons they can't annex these places is 'cause the sewer systems are so screwed up. Well, if everyone, if you have a sanitary sewer district to start with, that means you have a central collection point. And now you can actually do something. And to me, it isn't that we're opposed to, I'm not opposed to septic system, it's just that, yeah, if this thing's ever annexed or wants to grow, you aren't gonna have everybody ripping up their front yards, reversing their, reversing their sewage flow, because they all go out the backyard, yard, and someone, everybody does something different. You know, they're all at different levels, everything's different versus a sanitary sewer district where things are standardized. And, but I was, I was very happy when the county planning commission unanimous, or the county commission unanimously supported our turning that one down. And it reverts back to, 'cause what came up at that meeting then was all these housing developments that are out there. Well, they were all done pre, pre nineteen eighty-five. And like I said, I look, actually was approached to buy a lot there in nineteen seventy-seven at a housing development out in that area. So these have been, and then that's when the county started realizing, this is gonna be a free-for-all if we don't get this under control. The eligibility's and, and much more of a planned approach to housing developments.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think that's why we turned it down, though. I think, I think that we just, county commissioners are naturally supportive of the planning commission.
Yeah, we know that.
But truly, I think that it just was a bridge too far to build that if it was actually-
Sixty-six, sixty-one housing minutes.
Like that other subdivision that never was built-
Up by Hartford.
Up by, uh, by Wall Lake there, the one that was, had twenty feet of beach on Wall Lake.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
With the dust and field, it had a skinny field.
If that had been the location, I think it probably would have gone through. But of course, there is a sanitary system there that they, you know, for a couple million bucks could get hooked up to. But I think, uh, I think we really just felt it was, uh, it was a beautiful looking operation, but it was, uh, a bridge too far to stick it out there in the middle of nowhere.
Well, you're creating a town out in the middle of the county.
Well, and, you know, on the other hand, uh, I don't know why we continue to allow new residential development in the rural area when all they do is complain, whether it's a gravel pit, a hog farm, a, a gas station, a, uh, a yarn barn, uh, you know.
That's a challenge.
No matter what you put out there, the neighbors don't want any change. And for whatever reason, they chose not to buy everything within a three-mile sight of their one acre.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a challenge, but at least I think we have a system that it, for the most part, it functions okay.
Well, I think, uh, you know, I think that the other thing that we discussed tonight, the Dell Rapids, uh, stuff.
Yes.
I think that the, the growth around the cities is going to continue to, uh, to be of paramount importance here. And, uh, you know, I'm not sure that, uh, you know, the city of Sioux Falls shot down-
Do you shut that door, please? Let the folks visit out there.
City of Sioux Falls shot down that, uh, solar array that we had, I mean.
I thought that was fine.
You thought it was fine, but you know, it, it doesn't, doesn't matter what, what the, uh- Well, we can open the other door.
Well, I'll just ask those, they, they don't-
Okay, call the cops. They probably think we're talking about them, they're so vain.
There's a song about that, but go ahead.
No, I, I just think that, uh, you know, it continues to be, uh, you know, we, we have inherited these other situations like those teeny lots around Wall Lake that are unbuildable, even, uh, I mean, I don't know if you could slip a, a mobile home in there the long way and have it fit. But there's like seventy of them around that lake.
Of course, most of them are utilized now, except for on the west side, there's still a bunch.
Yeah. Anyway, I, uh, I, the, the city of Sioux Falls, et cetera, we, uh, and the city of, I think this, last month, we did discuss with Sioux Falls the idea of allowing larger outbuildings.
Okay.
And they didn't-
Kevin said the graduated thing kinda came from Sioux Falls?
So I met with the city of Sioux Falls last week with Jeff Schmidt and Diane. And we're, we're putting together a graduated, I think the city would like a graduated scale too, where if it's less than an acre, they would go up to sixteen hundred. Between one and three acres, they'd be okay with twenty-four hundred. And if it's above three eight, three to ten, they feel it could be up to thirty-six hundred. So they're-
Isn't the, isn't the city, isn't there something about you can only cover a certain percentage of your lot?
Yeah, they, they have that, and they also have a requirement, if you're in the city, you can't have an accessory structure that is larger than the footprint of the house.
Okay.
So, but that wouldn't necessarily apply. And, uh, last week, I, Kevin and I were, this is, call it old business, and I'm glad the Monans are here, 'cause they need to hear this as well. I was at a meeting last week at Spearfish, the Western Planners Conference and the South Dakota Planners Association. And at that meeting, Mike Cooper, the planning director for the city of Sioux Falls, said unequivocally, they would never approve any more developments within the city's growth area without it being annexed, without it having the capacity for sanitary sewer. And that was a quite a surprise to me, because I have talked to other developers, not only west of town, but east of town off Maple and Six Mile Road, where people wanna build subdivisions on septic systems. They go to the city and they talk to one of their planners, and they say, oh, yes, it's, we would, we would allow that if it's in the transition area. But then the planning director says, no, they would never allow it. So I was surprised, and there was, I, I felt there was definitely some mixed messages going on there, so.
I would think with their last difficulties with annexations lately, that they would, that's what they would do, require that.
Well, they, and I don't, that's certainly their right, but they need to be clear, crystal clear to people that are coming into them, the developers and property owners, that they just say, unless you are gonna be annexed into the city, we are not gonna support residential development. And, and until they do that, I mean, because it's really the city that's, is in the driver's seat when it comes to sanitary sewer. I don't, we as the county can't ask them to put someone on, on the city sewer, so. But, uh, so we're covering a couple different things. I'm reporting on the accessory building sizes, my discussion that Mike Cooper gave, made a presentation and made that statement, which I found interesting. Also, under old business, we have an appeal tomorrow. You may recall, um, you weren't here, but Opitz, Mr. Opitz, uh, and Tony Lee, north of town, and Jim Holbeck, he has appealed that larger building. That hearing is tomorrow in front of the county commission, so.
Feel free to come.
We also had at the last meeting, you missed a good meeting, you two.
Yeah.
Um, we had an item, we had the city that-
You miss Mountain Denali with no clouds, it was beautiful.
Well, we also have an item going to the joint city-county tomorrow, the city, city council, county commission, because the two planning commissions couldn't agree on the size of a building up in Andy's Acres, north of town.
Okay.
So that is also gonna go tomorrow at five o'clock, so. I will report on that. Don't, I'll tell you at the next meeting.
Is that what's driving the city now, wanting this graduated size of buildings?
What, what's your question?
Like I say, this Andy's Acres, size of buildings, is that kinda what the city's coming, say, well, we need to have-
The city, certain city staff members feel that we are spending too much time on larger accessory building requests. They don't, they feel that we should, if we're, if we're approving this many of them, then that sort of indicates that our ordinance needs to be amended to allow larger buildings. That's where they're coming from.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have another item also, actually. We had a meeting of the Southeast District of Counties, and virtually every commissioner present-
Is it CCOG?
Oh, it's counties. CCOG is different. These are county commissioners, uh, treasurers, auditors, elected officials. The sheriff and state attorney don't go, but, uh, so it's Minnehaha, Lincoln, Union, Clay, Yankton, Bonham, Turner, Hutchison. Is that eight? Something like that. Anyway, we, uh, we meet in a different county every three months, over two years, and then it starts over. But anyway, uh, especially the Yankton County Commissioners had issues with animal husbandry, with the, uh, things there. And we feel like, uh, well, a lot of people were complimentary of our activities, but we think that, uh, we need to try to standardize some of our procedures. Honestly, Union County has, does not appeal from planning and zoning to the, to the regular commission. It goes straight to court.
County commission.
Right. Anyway, so, uh, I think all the commissioners think that's the greatest thing, 'cause they don't have to make a decision in front of God and everyone. And, uh, you know, I think there's also talk of legislation in peer to, uh, you know, for example, make it so that, uh, less than a thousand animal units could automatically be approved if it were, uh, so the county commissioners wouldn't have to have their cousins and church mates yelling at them as they drive down the road or go to Sunday school. Which apparently happens to some of those people that are less heavily armed than me. But in any case, I don't, haven't seen that legislation, but the idea is that just the language, in my opinion, of, of this stuff is off-putting to people, you know. CAFO is a four-letter word, whereas family farm, uh, you know, some twenty-eight-year-old kid wants to raise, you know, five hundred cattle, and suddenly it's a factory farm. It's, uh, you know, the, the language is being used, uh, by people that, uh, not all from in this area, but, you know, we have to seize back the initiative on this in order to allow family farms, to allow animal husbandry. And, uh, so we might try to do some coordination between the different counties, especially like maybe having our planning directors meet. If lunch is involved, invite me.
Um, I think that Pat Gerdy from, um, from Yankton County is, uh, going to reach out. I, I talked to him a little bit a while ago, and he wants some direction on how maybe we can help him move their ordinance along.
Anyway, it's a-
Is it Hardey's Orchards, that guy?
It's an important issue, uh, for all the counties. And you know, we don't have the same issues as Harding County or Meade County or Lawrence County. We in the east and the southeast have different issues, and, uh-
And different people to deal with. When I was in Pennington County this summer, they were grumbling because they couldn't get bridge money from the state because they weren't willing to put on a wheel tax to match the state funds, and they were whining about it.
Yeah, they voted it down.
Just too bad, Pennington County.
They would have got, they would have gained millions on the deal.
I couldn't believe it.
Yes, their taxes would have gone up, but they would have been, you know, tripling their money on the deal.
Yeah.
But they tried to, when I was there, they did try to put a wheel tax on it, it was referred and voted down, so they have tried before.
You get what you want, just like you can't pass a wheel tax in Beetle County either. It's the same thing.
It shows in Beetle County.
Well, yeah, all these counties, they needed the money.
Well, anyway, I think that's, uh, that was my-
When are you gonna be done with that bridge that they're talking about? When are you going to be done with that bridge that they're talking about, this, this diverting trucks?
Um, I don't know, I think it just went closed just recently.
I think it'll be a while.
So it'll be a while.
That's not good. Okay, anything else? We're open for adjournment.
So moved.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 We are done for this month. Where were you at, Bonnie, last time?
I was in Philadelphia.
Oh, ringing the Liberty bell.